Do I have a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. We will start the truth in taxation hearing and I will invite Matthew Hammer to start us off with his report to give us some information about that and then how do you want to handle if there are questions?
We'll wait until the end for questions.
We'll let Matthew get through his report first.
Good evening. We're sure double members of the school board. Tonight, I'm trying to get this up. Here to present the public hearing for taxes paid in 2018 for the school district. These are coming on me as they were before.
There we go. There we got it.
So again, my name is Matthew Hammer, Director of Finance for Fridley Public Schools, and I'm here tonight and we're just going to go through about four different agenda items. Okay. We have state funding for schools, information on the district's budget for 18, 19. The district's proposed 2019 tax levy and then we'll open it up for public comments and questions. So the constitution assigns what is said principally to set forth funding for next other schools. System supposed to be uniform public school system and the legislature shall make such provisions by taxation otherwise as will secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state. As a result, school funding is highly regulated by the state. State formulas are determined by revenue, most revenue based on specific amounts of pupil units, tax policy for local schools, and then maximum authorities for property tax levies. District levies can levy less but not more than an amount authorized by the state of Minnesota unless approved by the voters. State also authorizes school boards to submit referendums for operating capital needs to voters for approval. Few challenges that have set forth for school districts in the state of Minnesota is the state's education formula is lagged behind inflation since 2002, oh three. And for fiscal year 2018, the legislature approved an increase of two percent, or $124 per pupil for this year for state funding as part of the basic formula. So what this looks like is, based on the weighting changes that have happened and our consumer price index, you can see the state funding formula over this time has lagged behind overall inflation throughout this period since 2003. On the other side, we have the underfunding of special education. MDE reports costs for every year that provides a special education cross subsidy. The current calculations that MDE has is from 2016, which shows that special education's been underfunded by about $697, or $697 million on average of a 40% cross subsidy for school districts, which that in essence means school districts are providing 40 cents on every dollar of special education fees or special education costs for the schools. This equates to a funding shortfall of about $5,783 per special education student in the Results is a growing dependence on referendum revenue. So in 1992, 93, about 65% of school districts had operating referendums that averaged about $332 per pupil. In 2018, that state average is $1,371 per pupil. And Fridley sits at about $911 per pupil with our operating referendum for pay 20, pay 19, 20. Referendum revenue provides about 13% of general fund operating costs and this amount is 951 is board-approved and voter-approved operating referendum is 420 in local option revenue across the state of Minnesota. That's the makeup of how those are put together. So changes in your tax levy doesn't necessarily determine changes in budget. There's different levy formulas that are in-state statute in the state of Minnesota. Those levies have different makeup, so some of our operating accounts for different funding formulas such as referendum revenue, operating capital, so on and so forth have a state aid offset. And as values change over time, market values change over time, it determines what portion of those revenues come from our local taxpayer as well as the state of Minnesota. So as you look at that, just because there's an increase in your levy doesn't necessarily mean there's an increase in overall revenue that is provided to the school district. So our cycle runs a little different than typical calendar year cycles that occur in the city, in the county. School year, budget year begins July 1st where the city and county budget year revolves around the calendar year. So 2019 taxes paid are revenue for the school district in 2019, 20. So they're basically lagging about a year behind of, half a year behind of what the overall, when the taxes are paid. So now we're just going to go over our budget. These are the major funds that Fridley has. Our general fund, where most of our, our most operations, teacher salaries, busing, all those major activities that are E-12 related come out of is our general fund, our food service fund, which houses all of our nutritional service program expenditures. Community education, community service, which is our fund four, which handles our community education, adult education, school readiness, those types of things. Our building construction fund that houses our capital projects, debt service that is made up of our amortization schedules from our bond payments and our internal service funds, which is where we house our OPEB, other post-employment benefit. Well, actually, we got that broken out here as an extra fund. Our internal service fund is actually where our self-insured medical and dental plans are housed, our OPEB trust and OPEB debt service, which is other post-employment benefits, is our trust that was issued a number of years back to pay for those ongoing costs for the school district that is housed in the trust and those debt service payments are paid in the OPEB trust, for the OPEB trust that were issued back in 2000. I'm not going to give you a date because, but it was back in mid 2000s. And those, that amortization schedule exists in the other employment and post-employment So this is our budget publication. This document can be found on the district's website underneath the finance department. It's an annual disclosure that's required by the state of Minnesota to provide audited financial results for our 17, 18 fiscal year, which is our previous fiscal year, and then our budgeted forecast for 18, 19. And this is required to be published within a few days of board approval of the audit or December 31st of each annual, or each fiscal year. So overall, the top two lines are general operation. We've had, we had some anticipated spend downs in areas for our assigned, our assigned in other areas in general fund. And then you can see in our restricted, those fund balances increased slightly because of some MA funds that came in to the district that were more than anticipated in 17, 18. And our forecasts are put out for June 30th, 2019, projected fund balance on the far right. You will see down about halfway down the page is our building construction fund. So the proceeds that were obtained in our 2019 levy were put into our construction fund, which was 27 and a half million of voter-approved bonds that were passed to fund deferred maintenance projects, safety and security, additions that are elementaries and some technology infrastructure. What you're seeing in 17, 18, that spend down of 8,763,000 is the spend down of those proceeds. And those proceeds are anticipated to be fully expended in our building construction fund by the end of 2019. And what will remain in the construction fund will be our capital projects levy that is another voter-approved levy that was passed back in 2000, renewed in 2013. So this is the breakdown. You can see the general fund makes up a vast majority of our overall budget. It accounts for 44, almost 45 million dollars, or 80% of overall operations for the school district in 2018, 2019. And then you can see the food service, community service, construction fund make up smaller percentages of the overall pot, which is $55,419,000 in revenue for 2018, 19 projected budget. On the general fund revenue side, you'll see that a majority of our funds are coming through state aid for Fridley Public Schools, almost 80% or a little bit over 80%. The other portion is coming through our local levy at 13.9%. We get about $1.2 million in federal aid and then our other revenues are generated through MA billing makes up a vast majority of that, but fees that come through for activities and other types of things come through that as 2.7% of our overall revenue budget, which So this is a general fund expenditure by program breakdown. The important piece in this slide to look at is if you start with that green, that green pie and start working your way around on the bottom to the left and work all the way up to pupil support services, 80 cents on the dollar is going to touch our students and that's a benchmark that we use at Fridley to try to stick to, to keep as many dollars as of our budget going directly to student services, whether they're transportation, instruction, special education vocational, instructional support, those types of things reside there. And then the other 20 cents on the dollar goes to fund facilities, which is making up an increasingly larger percentage of our budget as our facilities get older and administration support services. And our other is transfers that are going to other funds for debt service and capital projects through our levies. This slide is just a good illustration of that school operations are heavily human capital. So if you take a look at that salaries and wages and the employee benefits, roughly 75% of our budget is made up of strictly wages and benefits as a school district. Purchase services makes up 16.4%, but about half or a little bit more than half of that is contracted transportation services for providing transportation. And then the other major sections of the general fund budget are supplies, capital expenditures, a small bit of debt service that funded some energy projects that happened in late 2000s and then just other expenditures for memberships and other types of things that land in other expenditures. So general fund expenditure budget, 44,900,000 in total for 2018, 19. So now we're just going to go through payable 2019 property tax levy. Termination of levies, we'll compare our 2018 levy and any changes that are specific to that, those changes from our pay 2018, 2019 levy and what those impacts are on taxpayers. So just a little property tax background. Every owner of a taxable property pays taxes to various taxing jurisdictions. So as you look at your statement, there's different pieces that are going in there, are on there for county, city, township, school districts and other special districts in which the property is located. Each taxing jurisdiction sets its own tax levy, often based on limits provided by the state of Minnesota. And the county sends the bills, collects the taxes from the property owners and distributes all the funds back to the taxing jurisdictions. Just a sample parcel statement that provides your proposed tax levy, voter-approved in other levies, and then which taxing jurisdiction they're made up of. And those documents are in people's hands between November 11th and 24th with information on those impacts, which is a requirement by the state of Minnesota. So schedule events, what happens with school districts levies. In September, MDE prepares and distributes the first draft of our levy limitations, which provides all the information that is provided by state statute on different levies that are required local offset or local input into providing funds that offset what the state of Minnesota provides in their levy state aid and levy ratios. By September, at our September 18th meeting, the school board approved that proposed levy, which was levied at the maximum at that point in time in September of 18, which has been historically our practice at Fridley schools. And then mid-November, proposed statements are provided to our taxpayers and then our hearing here tonight at December 18th for our proposed levy. And following hearing, the school board will certify final levy limits. So here's our overview of our proposed levy for payable 2019. Overall, our proposed property tax levy has an increase of $757,000 or 7.2%. That total differs from our proposed levy approved by the board in September because the district refinanced some of its existing debt, which is actually that other post-employment benefit bond issue that was done. And we were able to refinance that earlier this fall, which has provided some tax relief to our local taxpayer in the amount of about $23,367. And state law requires that we explain the reasons for these major increases. So we're just going to, or major increases or decreases in the levy. And we're going to just take a look at those. This is really small, but it's hard to see, but that, on the bottom, that illustrates that 7.2% and that $757,000 change and documents through all the different levies that are part of our levy certification. The top three, or the top two, or no, top one actually, top one is our voter-approved referendum. And then midway through the pages, our capital projects referendum. And then as you scroll down to our debt service, you'll see voter-approved funds. And those all make up that 3.7 million that's on the second line from the bottom. Those are the voter-approved portions of the Fridley School District levy. And the other 7 million, almost 7 and a half million is statutory or other levies that are, come through that require local offset to what the state provides us. So just as an example, that operating capital levy requires in pay 19, our taxpayers to pick up $163,000 of the overall revenue, which is about 757,000 for our school district. And each one of those categories has different state to levy ratio. Just making sure I'm on time here. I think I'm doing okay. So here's some explanation of the levy changes. We're going to go through all the major changes that happened, some major, some not so major. But local operational levy increased 63,241 for pay 2019. Our pay 2019 levy funding for local operational revenue is provided through a combination of local tax levy and state aid. And because of district's total property value, so market values in our community have increased in, or forecasted to increase in 2019, that levy actually has increased in the amount that our local taxpayers are picking up from a levy ratio, which is, overall that levy has an increase, but the local share is increasing for Fridley School District. On the general fund, on the capital project referendum side, this is a voter-approved levy that was passed a number of years back that was, it's set on a tax rate. So as the tax base grows, this levy grows slowly with that. It's built at 5.74% of our NTC or net tax capacity. And this levy is increasing by 57,000 strictly just because overall property values in Fridley School District are going up and it's bringing in about $57,000 of extra revenue that funds technology expenses, but also capital projects for deferred maintenance, roofs, floors, those major deferred maintenance projects that the school has. On the long-term facilities maintenance side, or what we call LTFM, this is a levy that has come on in recent years and what we're seeing here is a decrease of about $84,000 in this levy. And this levy is used to fund deferred facility maintenance costs. This levy is decreasing because our overall enrollment forecast has decreased, so that's strictly driving that $84,000 decrease or a little bit more than that in pay 19. Adjustments, we have another, this is coming through at a minus 58,000. Each year, initial levies are based on our estimated enrollments and because overall enrollments are now forecasted to be down slightly, this levy in future years has decreased, which is causing a negative adjustment for the Fridley School District levy in 2000, or 2000 pay, or 2019 levy. So when we move to debt service, this is where we're seeing an increase and then we'll also see another larger increase, which is due to some timing in the next slide. So $108,000 in long-term facilities maintenance increase. This is based on our amortization schedule that was set up many years ago for our alternative facility bonds that were passed back in the mid 2000s for projects that funded our internal air quality projects. And that's strictly driven off the amortization schedule for that time. And then on the debt service side, we have a reduction for debt access, which is a formula provided through the state of Minnesota. And what we're seeing here is something in timing, because we actually had a refunding that took place last year. And as part of that refunding, the debt excess was actually decreased as part of that refunding last year and it's coming back onto the books, which is what we're seeing here from a timing perspective of an increase of a half million dollars. And when you look at the overall levy, our debt service levy is going up by about 15%, but our overall levy is only going up about 7.5%. And this is all strictly driven off timing of when the payments and the formulas have been calculated by MDE or Minnesota Department of Education. So now let's look at a four-year levy comparison. And we have some different charts here that we like to take a look at. I've got three minutes, so I'm going to rush through this. That have increases, or this is a graph that looks at different homestead values and if you assume no property value increase, what the taxes would look like. And this is strictly looking at if, if things remain the same from 2016 to 2019, what would taxes look like? And overall, your taxes would actually be going down, but that's not necessarily the That's just, I'm going to flip through these and get to the next slide so we have some time for questions real quick. This takes a look at what's happened over that timeframe on those households that, and what those market values would be anticipated to be. So based on the last, from 2016 to 2019, we've seen a cumulative change of 26% over that time. And as you look at that, over time, market values have adjusted and so if you find a home on there that's 150,000, it's, or 119,000, it's worth about 150,000 in 2019's dollars and you see a $51 change from 2018, 19, when you account for the market value changes that have happened within the Fridley School District. So this is an illustration of just based on those cumulative changes, what taxes have looked like over the period from 2016 to 2019. And this is a $150,000 residential homestead. So factors impacting, there's many factors that affect taxpayers' school taxes. Changes in value is a big driver right now. Changes in the total value of all properties, school district, or of the school district, that's another big driver of what we're seeing because market values have increased, which is affecting those state formulas. Increases or decreases in levy amounts caused by stances and state funding formulas, local needs and costs, voter-approved referendums, which we have none of, or other factors, or we have none of that are changing this year. So the next step is public comment.
So I'll open the floor now. Thank you, Mr. Hammer, for that thorough information. I'll open the floor if there are any questions. I would ask you to come up to the microphone so, because this is televised, so there are people watching it so that we get your voice on the air. So if there are any questions, I would invite anyone to come up and ask them at this time.
My name's Don Grant. I live on Rice Creek Road and I don't have as many questions as I do. Thanks for the, especially the volunteer service of the board to care for the children of the Fridley District. I happen to drive a small van for Voight Bus in the Spring Lake Park District and it's a special ed van, so I get a little bit of what goes on. And someday I would like to come back to the meeting when Mr. Hammer gives a full discussion of the state formula for schools. I just came because when I got the tax statement, everything went up, including the value of my house, it said. And I know I can't do anything about the nonsense going on in Washington, so I thought, well, I'll check locally because as they say, all politics are local. And supposedly, there's no politics with kids and tax dollars, but oh wait, yes, there is. So I'm going to just pay a little more attention to what goes on locally, the county and the city. I've been to those hearings and it's an enormous amount of work, I know, to be a civil servant and to be a board member and to keep track of the kids, because I do part of it every day and it's a challenge. So thank you very much for doing what you do and I'm going to look more on the website. the website for more information. I'm assuming that presentation is on the website?
It will be.
Excellent, will be, thank you.
It will be after tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing, and thank you for driving bus. If there are no other comments, I would look for a motion to adjourn the truth in taxation hearing. I'll call one more time for any other comments before I call for the motion. Do I have a motion to adjourn the truth in taxation hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Sampson, seconded by Thornton Stark.
I know, it's a tie.
All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Truth in taxation hearing adjourned. I think we'll, we're at our time, so. So at this time, I would like to call to order the school board meeting for December eighteenth, the Fridley School Board meeting for December eighteenth. And let us start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Sampson, seconded by Thornton. We will move on to our spotlight on rec. Oh, yes, let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Now, moving on, we have our spotlight on recognition, and I invite Dr. Heil to share with us our employee of the month.
Right, thank you. Good evening, Chair Delvo and school board members. I am delighted to share our employee of the month for December of two thousand eighteen, and that employee is Fatima Anazami. So congratulations to Fatima, our employee of the month for December. Fatima has served as our student information coordinator in our student support services office at Fridley High School for two years. In the office, Fatima's energy for our students and their families is second to none. She's always extremely positive, caring, and helpful. The students love her, and the staff respect her hard work, dedication, and professionalism. Additionally, Fatima's attention to details and follow-through makes her an invaluable staff member to all who work with her. As one staff member noted, Fatima expresses ideas and information clearly and in a variety of ways. She is principled, Fatima has integrity, honesty, and a sense of fairness. Another staff member noted that Fatima is so incredibly hardworking and does everything that needs to be done. She's incredibly helpful and just all-around very good at a very tough job. We are very lucky to have Fatima as a member of our team, and we congratulate her on honor employee of the month, and that was written by Patty Han, our Fridley High School principal.
And next, we have another unique recognition. We have our board member, Kim Sampson, is, this is her last board meeting with us at Fridley. She has resigned from her position at the board and has been with us for eighteen years, I believe. Dr. Heil, you had some remarks you, you were going to read about that, so I'm going to turn it over to you first, and then I'll open it up if any board members want to say anything to Kim.
Thank you. I would like to present a formal proclamation that was given to us by Governor Dayton that states the following for Kim. So whereas of December thirteenth, excuse me, thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, Ms. Kim Sampson, school board member, will retire after serving Fridley Public Schools since January of two thousand. And whereas, Ms. Sampson received a bachelor's science degree in accounting from St. Cloud University and a master of business administration from the University of St. Thomas. And whereas, Kim Sampson has served as Fridley Public Schools as a school board member for eighteen years, serving as chair, vice chair, clerk, treasurer, and director. I thought it was, it'll say superintendent at some point, but that wasn't under, so. Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of free, freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, school board members are an integral part of the education process. And whereas, Ms. Sampson's record of accomplishments during her tenure on the school board includes upgrades of aging facilities in the district, Hayes and Stevenson's elementary schools expansions, the addition of Fridley Moore Lake Area Center, and whereas, just more compliments are coming. Ms. Sampson supported the implementation of many programs and initiatives such as a district-wide transition to the International Baccalaureate Curriculum, all-day kindergarten for children, voluntary preschool, renewal of levies, school board policies, district labor contract negotiations, and served as a representative on a district special education advisory committee, district wellness committee, district finance and facility committee, district curriculum committee, and a school board representative on the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Board and Northeast Metro School District nine sixteen board. And whereas, Ms. Sampson has earned the respect and gratitude of families, colleagues, and community members for her hard work and commitment to the students of Fridley Public School District and their families, who, while also raising her own family and working as a manager of order to cash operations at Oracle. So your actual certificate signed by Governor Dayton states, this certificate is presented to Kim Sampson in recognition of eighteen years of excellent service to the state of Minnesota and the Fridley Public School District School Board. Therefore, with appreciation and respect for the people of Minnesota, this certificate is presented to Kim Sampson.
Thank you. Well, I have to say, I have very much appreciated the voice that you bring to the board and the questions that you ask. She has a finance background, she understands finance very well, and asks very good questions that have helped to educate the rest of the board and have been helpful to staff as well to get a sense of knowing what things they need to share with us to make sure that we understand the topics as we're discussing them, and that is a really key strength of yours that you have brought to this board, and I've learned a lot from you over my short tenure here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Piggyback on the same thing, I do certainly thank you for all your service. I know you were on the board when I started twelve years ago, and I hope to keep up the work that you've set us on.
Yes, thank you, Kim, for the short amount of time I've known you. You've been very helpful and supportive on the board, and also personal life situations, and I appreciate that, and you will be missed.
But we're still going to call you for things, so don't think that you're off the hook. There will be advice given.
Exactly.
You can watch us on TV.
I will, I will. Yes, thank you all.
You can't sleep at night. Well, thank you, Kim, for your service.
Thank you.
So this is a good time for me to interject that we did post for an open board position because we're under a year from when the next school board election will be held. The board has the authority to appoint someone to step into Kim's shoes from January until the election is held in November. So we, that was, that application process was put out to the public. We did interview three candidates a week ago, and we did select a candidate, and he is here with us tonight. So filling in, in the space that Kim is opening up, will be Abdi Salam Adam, who is going to be appointed at the January meeting of the school board. So we will be seating him in January at our January fifteenth meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the interesting, fun stuff again, Mr. Hammer, if you would come up again and give us your truth in taxation presentation.
I'm going to do a quick summary of it, because we just got done doing it at our public hearing.
For those of you who may not have tuned in earlier, we had our public hearing at seven o'clock, and Mr. Hammer just went through the full truth in taxation hearing, and that will be up on the website by tomorrow morning as well. So it's going to be a briefer presentation during the actual board meeting.
So I'm actually just going to, I'm going to cover just a couple of things. I'm going to go over just a brief summary of the district's budget for informational purposes, and then our proposed levy changes in high level, real quick. So I'm just going to skip ahead here. So here's our annual bud, budget publication. This is a report that's required by state statute to be provided to the public shortly after a district approves its annual audit, or by December thirty-first of each fiscal year. And overall, you can see that our seventeen, eighteen actual expenditures and revenues by fund, and then what we project for June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, for overall fund balance in all of our funds. I'm going to skip through these slides just to get to our overall proposed levy. So our overall proposed levy for two thousand nineteen is projected to be up seven point two percent, or seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. This is a change from our initial levy certificate, or preliminary levy certification that happened in September. We've actually been able to reduce our overall levy by twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars by refunding some other post-employment bonds that were issued, and we were able to refund this fall. So that's good news for our tax base, as we'll see a small decrease of twenty-three thousand, a little bit over twenty-three thousand in this levy cycle. Overall, as you can see, levies made up of multiple categories. About three million, seven hundred thousand is voter-approved, and the other seven million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, just shy of seven and a half million, is our other levies that are, come through as required levies through state statute that require a district or a local offset to the state portions that are provided through funds, through this funding formula. Just a quick explanation of changes. Overall levy went up sixty-three thousand dollars in our local optional revenue, driven largely by the value of our properties have been increasing, and you'll see that across many of our levies this cycle. There's erosion of the equalization factor, because our property values are growing district-wide, and with that, there is an increasing local share through many of the formulas that are driven by state statute. So as property values increase, those local ratios actually increase as well, the state aid portion decreases. So what we're seeing across a lot of our levies is that, that effect. Or, in this case, our capital projects levy is going up a little bit, which this one's driven off of property values as well, which this levy is a voter-approved levy that's driven off our net tax capacity, a portion of our net tax capacity. The one major area is in our debt service, which we're seeing an increase from some timing of some debt excess, which is a formula that's figured at the state of Minnesota. And as we refunded some bonds last cycle, there is a decrease in this levy, and it's coming back on as per the formula at the state through this levy cycle. Just as a look at overall, just to give some people a basis, if there's no increase in property values, so this chart takes a look at from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, with the assumption that there was no property value increase over that time, and if you would take that, those assumptions into effect, our overall levy from, for pay nineteen versus pay eighteen is actually reducing across the board. On the flip side, if you take a look at that with the growth that we've seen over that time, which is about twenty-six percent, that's where you see the tax levy growth on households. And we went over that in our slides earlier. So there's many things just for people to keep in mind that change the, an individual, your individual property taxes, not just school district jurisdictions, there's counties, municipalities that are part of that tax statement and other taxing jurisdictions, but for the school side of things, there are changes in property value are a large driver, changes in funding formulas, and changes in overall property values across the district have impacts on, on those levies, whether they increase or decrease. So that's the quick and dirty of the tax levy. I'm going to stay up here.
So for requiring mindset, want to know more, they, they can go to the website.
The district website?
For the full presentation.
Full presentation.
Yeah, and it'll be part of our, it's a part of our board book too, as well, so it can be found there as the board agenda items, or board documentation.
And then your number is there if people have questions.
Number and email.
Okay. Would you like to move to the next item, which is the revised budget for two thousand eighteen, nineteen?
Thank you. Good segue. I'll just stay here. So tonight, we're going to present our two thousand eighteen, nineteen revised budget. This is actually, we've moved this up a full month, which with the work of the finance staff, is, is a pretty good feat with the amount of work that was required to move this from our January timeframe, and everybody within the school district to move this up an entire month. So we've, we're able to present this in December, and it gives us a, it's our benchmark for as we roll into our cycles, as we set our budgets for, for the rest of eighteen, nineteen, and then forecast into nineteen, twenty as well. So our budget planning is driven off of our five more priorities, and we always like to take a look, these are our incoming kindergartners, so as we, we provide our strategies, we're always looking at, from our, in our budget planning process, to make sure we're improving academic achievement, using effective instructional strategies, make sure we're maintaining a safe and positive learning environment for our students. Financial instability is a huge piece of this whole budget planning process, and then as part of it, we need to make sure we continue to improve parent, school, and community partnerships. And again, here's just a highlight from last year of our graduates of two thousand eighteen. So enrollment drives everything, for the most part, in school budgets, as we, as we take a look at those. And here's our ongoing trend. So as we look back to two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we had a slow growth from twenty-nine hundred approximately in thirteen, fourteen, to our peak in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, three thousand fifty-two students. These numbers don't include our voluntary pre-K program, so they're, they don't have those as part of them from a trend analysis, because the voluntary pre-K program has only come on in the last couple of years. So in seventeen, eighteen, we saw a decrease in overall enrollment, and then again, in eighteen, nineteen, now we're estimating an even larger decrease in enrollment to twenty-eight fifty in our budget forecast. So what does that look like overall? This is our overall trend. We use this as a measure of our financial health. When we adopted our budget back in June, our, our enrollment assumption actually was twenty-nine, sixty-five. That was how we built staffing and everything at that point in time, so as we've rolled at twenty-eight fifty, we have some revenue loss, because everything that we do is driven off of those student counts, and that defines what our aid is going to be through state of Minnesota and our local levies. So as we project out here, at the end of seventeen, eighteen, our actual fund balance ended at seven point three eight percent, or two point, just shy of two point five million. And then as we forecast our budget for seventeen, eighteen, our unreserved expenditures and fund balance are two point three million, or six point seven percent on trend. This falls just shy of our fund balance policy, but we thought it was important, when we looked at those overall trajectory, to make sure we were forecasting a budget that gave a conservative look at where we thought things could end at the end of the year, based on those enrollment targets, and what we were seeing in our overall enrollment as of the first of December. When we look at revenues by source, this just gives you a little outlook, and this is also back when we were talking about the tax levy. It's a good slide to illustrate that, that overall state revenues are set, make up seven point nine point seven, just shy of eighty percent of our overall revenues in seven, or FY nineteen. In FY eighteen, they almost were eighty-two percent. And what you're seeing here is those local revenues are actually picking up a greater portion of that, and that's the, that's the, as property values are increasing, your, our local levy ratios are also, the amount that our local taxpayers are picking up is a greater portion than it has been in prior years. And I, as property values continue to grow, we're going to continue to see this change on those lines. And then federal revenues make up about three point two percent overall, or about one point four million, and that change from FY eighteen to FY nineteen is largely driven off of our new MSAP grant that we received, which is about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in FY nineteen.
MS?
MSAP, Minnesota.
It's a magic schools of America program.
Magic Schools of America grant. I got to use the right terminology, he's good at reminding me of that, so everybody knows.
Keeping you on your toes.
Yeah. Yeah. General fund budget overall, we're looking, with that enrollment drop, we're looking at a deficit of about 225,000, which is a number when overall enrollment had dropped by that much was, should have been a lot larger than that, but we've done a good job of making sure we're controlling costs through the beginning of the fiscal year and updating forecasts to make sure we've got accurate numbers. So that puts us at a projection of 6.75 percent, which is about $80,000 off of our fund balance policy at year-end at projection and we're hoping to close that gap through the rest of the year. Overall, our expense budget by fiscal year, for fiscal year 2019 looks like this. This is a good graph just to kinda illustrate the different breakdowns of program areas and how the money is spent in the general, or in the general fund expenditure budget. I like this graph because as you take a look at this, if you go from regular instruction, regular instruction all the way up to pupil support services, which is our largely made up of transportation service, 80 cents on the dollar goes to directly support our students. And that makeup is something we strive to continue to keep our target on to make sure that as many of the dollars in our budget are directly going to students in, in support services and going directly to, to those, directly to our students in the district. The other portion is largely made up of our sites, buildings and other administrative and district support services and our buildings and grounds has become, is continually increasing as a percentage as we move forward and as we look into the future, that'll be, that trend will continue because our buildings are average 50 years old in Fridley School District, which means they continue to increase in our maintenance needs. This slide, just a good illustration of that we're a human capital operation. So the bottom, the bottom slide or the bottom portion of the pie chart is 53.6 percent of our budget and the general fund is made up of salaries and wages. And then as you go up to the left from that, about 20 percent of our overall budget is employee benefits. So that makes up roughly 75 percent of our overall operation is a human capital with wages and benefits. And then in that pupil support services, that's 17.7 percent of our overall operating budget, but a big chunk of that is transportation. Little bit more than half of that 17 percent is made up of transport, contracted transportation services in the school. When we look at our other, what I call non-major funds, food service is projected to be about balanced for fiscal year 18-19 with a surplus forecasted at this point in time of 15,000 roughly. Overall, there's a healthy fund balance there from an operations perspective for our nutritional service, food service fund. 482,000 is what we're projecting at year-end right now and that's helping the district because ongoing food service deferred maintenance costs are being funded through the food service fund, which helps out our district operation when that can self-sustain. Community service fund is projecting a small deficit at year-end. Overall, the estimated fund balance at the end of 2019 is healthy in our community service fund and this is largely driven off of some things that happened late in our community service fund with, in the year with some lost revenue through some agreements that have changed with the school district. On the other fun side, capital projects is projected to be spent out for our 2015 bond issue and our abatement bonds for our parking lot. So that's why you're seeing a deficit spend in our capital projects fund overall. You can see we're, we're estimating to have some funds left in there at year-end. And then on the internal service fund side, that, that is made up of our OPEB trust and our medical and dental self-insurance plan. So overall, those plans are still sitting in a healthy position. And then debt service is the other non-major fund, which is projected to have a small deficit, but that's strictly driven off of our amortization schedules and the, the timing of levy recognition through the levy system. So are there any questions, comments?
Any questions from the board? I have a comment unrelated to this. This will be Mr. Hammer's last meeting with us and so I would like to thank you for your service. You have done, I believe you've been with the district 10 years?
Yeah, it's already 10.
Already 10.
Doesn't look like too many grades.
Yeah, I know.
We wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors and you have done really a phenomenal job of continuing to improve the presentation and the clarity and the transparency of the finances of the district and really have your finger on the pulse of that and have helped educate us and make sure that things are clear for the public as well in any documents that we put out and just you've been a very valuable resource for this district and we hate to see you go, but we wish you luck in your next phase.
Thank you. You've done a great job and provided a lot of consistency for people in the public. They've probably heard me say, point out during certain meetings that you've managed the 10-year plan of, you know, of the capital projects and provided that information consistently. So it's been very, very helpful as we look ahead at funding requirements for capital projects and deferred maintenance and I've, I've really appreciated the consistency in the reporting and the methodology that you've used. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been an honor. I mean, I've been able to grow immensely professionally and personally in this last 10 years and I am honored to have this opportunity and it's been an honor to serve the district of Fridley and the community of Fridley over the last 10 years. So thank you very much.
We missed. Thank you. Come back and visit us.
Oh, certainly.
Oh, he will.
Watch us on TV.
Promoting that.
All right. Doing a plug for cable. Yeah, we're gonna, is this ratings month? With, following up to Mr. Hammer's report, we, do I have a motion to accept the revised budget for 2018-19?
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, we have a motion to, for the tax levy final certification of pay 19. Do I have a motion? And that's the information that Mr. Hammer went through right before the amended budget. Do I have a motion to certify the final certification of the tax levy?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Riddle, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we have our resolution for accepting gifts to the district over the past month. School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district and therefore be, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Fridley High School for a total of $450. Nina Zalany for the Fridley High School Choir Program, Judge James and Mary Gibbs. The following persons donated to the Fridley Middle School. Ann and William Stevenson donated a clarinet for the Fridley Middle School Band Program. Jessica Malari donated a percussion set for the Fridley Middle School Band Program. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary School for a total of $600. The Fridley Lions Club for the I Love To Read Program. An anonymous donor with Best Buy Program Match and Catherine Johnson. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. This is a resolution, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Next, I would like to invite up, excuse me, I, I would like to invite up Jennifer Klosman to do the second reading of and adoption of policies.
Thank you, Board Chair Delvo, School Board, Superintendent Heil. Just briefly coming back for School Board Policy 501 for a second reading tonight. There were not additional changes after our first reading and so I'm just asking that the board adopt the policy as, as written.
We'll do, we'll do a motion at the end of all the policies.
I, I move that we accept the second reading of policies 501, 504, 504P, 506, 505 and 505P. Can I do that?
Absolutely.
Second.
All those in favor, excuse me, motion by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried.
And there were no changes in any of the policies, even though you only presented about the ones in particular, but there were no changes in any of the policies over the last month.
Next, we'll do the consent agenda. This is where agenda items such, these are standard agenda items that are on the agenda Oh, okay. There's a question whether we voted on the last item we made the motion, motion by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor of accepting the second reading of the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. I'm all teary-eyed from all these goodbyes tonight. I'm all flustered. All right, next, we are moving on to the consent agenda, which is, excuse me, which is a agenda of standard school board items such as the minutes of the school board meeting, resignations, retirements, leave of absence, new contracts, monthly financial reports, the high school registration handbook for the 19-20 school year. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda. I'd just like to point out one additional resignations, or excuse me, retirement. Francis Rinwalski has been with the district since 2009 as a custodial service person. And we'd like to thank him for all his service.
Thank you. So motion was moved by Riddle. Do I have a second? Seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent, consent agenda passed. Ms. Klosman, you are still up here and I will also invite Jael, Jael McLemore up to the microphone as well for the first reading of another series of policies.
Do you wanna step back to the student enrollment review?
Student enrollment.
Yes, let's do that first.
Thank you, Chair Delvo.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. Seeing if you're paying attention.
I just wanna do an update on student enrollment for Fridley Public Schools today. Our enrollment from November 1st to December 1st showed a slight decline of 10 students. Our BPK in elementary remained stable and we had a loss of about 10 students at the secondary level. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Heil around enrollments?
These are totally normal. We do usually see start, see some declines over the first three, four months of the year.
I would like to invite the both of you to go through our first reading of a, a series of policies.
Okay, Policy 520 is our district's policy on student surveys. We have just a couple of minor changes here to make, to recommend tonight. The first one is general statement in section two. We have added the term district along with school as an entity that can conduct student surveys. The previous version only identified schools as being able to do so. The other major change is under section four, item C. We have included information concerning student privacy and parental access to information, for example, being able to evaluate the survey before giving permission for their students to participate in it. These guidelines are taken from the Minnesota School Board Association Policy Handbook on Student Survey, which is really relevant to the Department of Education regulations on student surveys. So as the district is looking forward to conducting a student survey from MDE, our Minnesota Department of Education, next year, it's going to be relevant for us to be able to include this information become, because it provides a quick guide for folks who may have to answer questions about that, but also just informing parents of their rights under the regulation. So this is being submitted to you tonight for a fast reading.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair. There's several policies I'll be briefly running through with the board for a first reading this evening. The first one being School Board Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. I also refer to this as the FERPA policy. With regards to this policy, a number of the changes that you see in here as redlines relate to statutory references and/or just clarification with internal references to this policy itself. We had shifted between references to the name itself or the section of the policy. So we're making those consistent as well with the statutory references. We're having that be consistent language throughout the policy itself. There were a few minor changes with some language that were reflective of the model MSBA policy as well. The second policy I'm reviewing with you guys this evening is Policy 522, Student Sex Non-Discrimination. This policy as well just has some minor clarification from the model MSBA policy with some language changes based on those recommendations. Again, these are not significant deviations from the policy as previously provided. The next policy is School Board Policy 522, 525, Violence Prevention. Again, in this one, there's some shifting of policy language just even into different sections of the policy itself and then some clarification based on model recommendations. And the final school board policy I am reviewing with you this evening is 529, Notification of, to Staff Regarding Placement of Students with Violent Behavior. The one addition that is being made in this policy is relating to the definition of a school staff member and who that all includes. Given we have a number of staff members in the district that are contracted service individuals, whether from other districts or service providers that we have working with some of our students, we are also including those individuals as individuals that would potentially be notified if these circumstances would apply. A corresponding change to the Policy 529 is the form itself and the changes that we're including in here are additions that are included in the model School Board Policy form itself and just provide some additional clarification on information that the building principal would provide if one of these notifications were required.
All right. So we'll have the month to review these and see them back in January for a second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from school board members, we'll start with Mr. Chris Riddle for the Northwest Suburban Integrations Joint Powers Board.
Well, our December meet, or excuse me, our November meeting, the biggest news that we have to report is the onboarding of a new district to the north, to the consortium. Because the Anoka-Hennepin School District is now listed as a racially isolated district, meaning they have a minority content higher than 20 percent, or excuse me, 20 percentage points higher than their neighboring districts, that gives them that demarcation of a district with, that is racially isolated. Fridley has been racially isolated for the number of years now, so they're just joining the group there. As such, one of the districts that is adjoining them, that touches their district, is then allowed to become part of a consortium like the Northwest Suburban and as such, the folks in St. Francis have petitioned to join the Northwest and we did vote to bring them on. They'll have a little bit more legwork to do as they will need to write an achievement and integration plan, so they'll actually be joining us Jan, or excuse me, starting July 1st of 2019. So, but we're certainly happy to welcome them aboard and bring them into as part of the consortium. Other things that we followed up just- Other things that we followed up, just got the final numbers for placements throughout the Magnet Lottery program throughout the Northwest Suburban District. And the real main reason that the integration district was formed was to help move students across inter-district boundaries. We feel we're fairly successful doing that in 2017, 18 years. We moved 5,500 students across the board. Of that number, 635 came to Fridley from the current seven district consortium. So the other six districts, we were able to bring in an additional 639 students from there. So it's been a very well-thought-out, well-enacted program to really get cross-boundary movement of students for programming. That programming is really all thought of with regards to the Magnet schools. So being in IB schools, we get them all for that, for folks coming in to join our IB programming.
And Vice Chair Riddle, I just want to share, we had already saw some of the lottery numbers coming in, and our pre-K program is currently under authorization. We already have eight applicants for our pre-K program already for lotteries.
For next year. For next year's lottery. Yeah, that actually, I believe it's open till mid-December. I forget what the exact cutoff date is, around the 21st or 22nd, I believe, somewhere in that timeframe. But then they'll be beginning to do the initial lottery for that, for the, for open seats throughout the consortium. There is a secondary lottery that also takes place in March. So we'll see how those numbers come out, but it's been very strong in the past. Mr. Hammer also mentioned the MSAP, the Magnet Schools Grant Program that we did receive across the consortium to Fridley. It's about 150, 155,000 for next year. Overall told, I believe it's about a $25 million grant program for over five years. With that grant, they'll be doing some shifting. They're bringing in a new coordinator for that program to just oversee the grant specifically to help all the individual districts out with the new programming that's coming in through the Magnet program. So, so there'll be some changes over in there, some staff positions over there. And that was the main topics.
All right. Good stuff. The next update is on the 916 school district. This is a district that Fridley is a member of this intermediate district. And this is where students who need additional special education services attend school there. There is currently a waitlist for their programming, and that is because they are short 40 to 50 some staff positions. They have still not been able to fill those staff positions throughout the year. As a result, cannot take some of the referrals. So that's, that's a challenge that trickles down then to us and getting those students the services that they need. The rest of, there's an open house at their Career and Technical Center coming up in January, on January 8th, from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. And so that's an opportunity for people to go see their career and technical education for themselves and learn more about the program. And the rest of the meeting was spent largely on sort of some routine, routine board items, board evaluation, that type of thing. So we did talk about the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Convention, where they approve legislative resolutions for their platform for the year. There were 22 total resolutions that were looked at and voted on. And six of those resolutions that were passed were related to special education. So we're going to see a lot of activity going to the Capitol around that topic this year when session begins. That's all I have on the 916 school district. Next, we have the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and Dr. Heil, if you would give that report.
Thank you. The report for AMSD, they covered some routine board procedures as well. They approved the legislative platform and their position papers, as well as they recognized some outgoing board members that were leaving. They did report back that for the state budget, that the state budget forecast shows a surplus. But in the continuation of the conversation, it came and said with inflation that we probably wouldn't see a lot going on the general fund this year. So that was a little bit disappointing. There was two presenters, Chris Adamson and Laurie Gravina. They're for AMSD. They represent their government affairs consultants. And they did a wonderful job of sharing how to communicate with legislators and how school districts can help put ourselves in a more positive position to inform our school board members on what our needs were. So, and there was also another one on social media advocacy that they shared. So thank you.
All right. That concludes the business and reporting part of our agenda. So there are a number of important future school board dates coming up. The IB Diploma Celebration and Silver Platter Breakfast is December 20th at 7:30 a.m. at Fridley High School. The Association for Metropolitan School Districts 2019 Legislative Preview will be held January 4th from 7:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Quora Educational Center at 70 West County Road B2 in Little Canada. The Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held January 9th at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. The Schools for Equity and Education Meeting will be held January 11th at 9:30 a.m. at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville. And the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting will be held January 15th with the work session at 5:30, the open forum at 7:00, and the business meeting at 7:30. There is a change in location beginning in January for the Fridley School Board. We will, from January on, be meeting at the Fridley Community Center in rooms 107 and 109. So beginning in January, we will have a new meeting location, Fridley Community Center. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Sampson, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting adjourned at 8:20.